I made the mistake of asking about his vacation.
Hope is not a plan.
Hope is not a what?
All right. Well, I'm waiting for my computer to go up. Why don't we call our meeting to order at 6:35?
Hi, everyone. Wow.
Sorry, 5:35. So, the main agenda tonight, I think, let's put a little parameters around what we want to talk about. I think the main decision tonight is going to be deciding whether we want to keep the budget as warned and move ahead with voting on the budget with the public on next Tuesday, or whether we want to kick the can down the road, see what happens with the state, and make potential changes to the budget, and then re-warn it, and, as I understand it, have a new voting day, which the state will pay for, any time before April 15th.
Which means it needs to be warned by March 20.
Okay.
So, that's the deadline.
So, that's the deadline for numbers.
By March 20.
25th or 26th. I don't have a 20 days before.
Let's say 25th.
20 days before the meeting.
And then, maybe before we go there, maybe we -- I apologize. I was trying to remember on the way over what had transpired before our last board meeting versus now. It's been a whirlwind of activity at the state level. I think the biggest thing, maybe I'll just kick it off, and Neil or others, if you want to weigh in. So, the biggest change was, is that since our last meeting, I believe, we used to have this 5% cap in place, which meant that our budget, no matter how much we spent, we were always going to be capped at the 5%, divided by the CLA, which was why the previous tax increase was around 16%. No matter what we do with the budget, whether we added millions of dollars to the budget to some extent, as long as we didn't go over 10%, or not. What happened at the state level, however, was, is that they soon found out that, I believe, at one point, every school district had tripped the 5% cap, which meant that the yield was -- I saw some spreadsheet that someone had flashed up on their screen. The yield number, of course, is what you divide our expenses by. That's basically the size of the fund rate, and then you divide it by the ADMs. Sorry, you divide the ADMs, then you use the yield, then the CLA. But, at one point, I think the yield was so low that when I put it into our model, it would have resulted in like an 80% tax increase this year. I mean, it was like -- because everyone was spending. So, what they've decided to do since then, and they just passed, is it Act 85? I'm losing track of the numbers.
850.
850?
Yes.
H-850.
H-850, which was just, I believe it was passed, but yet to be signed.
It was signed.
It was signed today.
It was signed.
It is now law.
It is now law. So, what that is, is a concept where what they did is, is they took last year's pupil count, which is now called ADM, divided by the total state pupil count. That was our Norwich percentage. Then, they took this year's new ADM underneath Act 127, which reflects the new waitings, divided by the new total ADMs, which, again, now has really no bearing on the number of kids, because it's based on the waitings. That percentage of that total versus the old percentage of the total, what the decrease was, that's really what the hit is to Norwich as far as our share, I like to think about it, of the state education fund that's coming back to us in a way. That resulted in a 19% decrease, 18% change, which they -- it happened to work out, I guess. I'm not sure if, just by luck, or if it actually is. But, it happened to work out where they decided to say, based on that, they're going to, for every percent decrease, give you a penny discount on your tax rate. So, the 19% decrease equals 19 cents off the tax rate. And there are about, I think I saw today, and it's in the documents that have been loaded, that Jamie loaded for us, there's a list of all the towns. Norwich is the greatest discount. I think there's about 37 of them, if I counted correctly, who are going anywhere from a couple cents up to 19 cents. And then, what happens is, is over the next five years, that 19 cents gets basically reduced by 20%. So, it goes from 19 cents to 15, to 11, to 4, to 0. So, what that means is, at least for our current budget, if we just go forward with the budget that we currently have, it results in a tax rate increase before the discount of about 32%, and after the discount of 18%, assuming the yield doesn't change. And what they did do, though, is they have updated the yield slightly. It has gone up, because they have assumed that some towns are going to be reducing their budgets, because all those towns that were at the 5% cap, some of them are probably going to go back and take some budget back out, because I think people had padded their budgets to get over the 5% cap. I do know that, you know, from a -- I have heard that towns like Thetford and others, even though they're getting less of a discount, I think I saw something on the listserv that they're getting a 30% tax rate increase. So, I think that is credit to the fact that our budgets over the year have been fairly, you know, we have kept a pretty good lid on them. I mean, this year's budget's only increasing by 4.6% overall. And what this means, though, is, is that, maybe this takes us into the next part of the discussion, as far as where we cut and when, unless the state does -- but, actually, so, let's just back up for a moment. Neil, I think, I think the idea is here is that we have been, what we're hoping is, at some point, that the legislatures actually, they have now solved the emergency, right, which is the 5% cap issue, which was turning into a holy cow, like we are screwed emergency for the state, have solved that with this discount. And there is a chance that sometime before they recess in June, that they will go back and either make some changes to Act 127. We don't know how or what. I think some of us have been emailing our legislatures directly with different ideas about, you know, how the funds might be distributed more properly and all that. But, again, we have no idea. We're hoping that we might have a seat at that table. But, I think there is unfortunately a point that, you know, some of the legislatures, I mean Norwich doesn't, it's just one of many towns in the state who are impacted by So, that being said, again, I think the meeting tonight, I think, is really to decide whether we want to move forward with the existing budget. I think unfortunately, that also takes us into a conversation that we probably all need to have, as far as what some cuts might look like, either now or down the road. At least, I personally believe that at some point, we probably need to be keeping the Marion Cross budget relatively flat, or slightly down over the next few years, because the Dresden budget will continue to increase. And, again, the 32% tax rate increase that I just talked about, that's only going to go up, even if our tax rate, you know, is our school tax rate, even if we just keep the school tax rate increasing by a few percentage points every year, the discount's coming off. So, eventually, that 32% will, our taxes will go up by 32% plus, whatever the budget goes up every year thereafter. So, you know, I've done some models. I think Neil and others have done some models, where even if you assume a 5% increase to our total school budget, Dresden and Marion Cross, when you play that out over five years, you could get a total tax increase from today to five years down the road of 80%, you know, almost doubling our taxes, which, for a lot of us, when you look at the property tax, you know, it's turning into some very big dollars. So, you know, I think we did some analysis over reduction of some classes. I mean, so, the state does have recommended state maximums for class sizes. They do have some percent, some date, you know, hours recommended minimums for pre-K. And then, you've got some other budget line items in our budget as well, like transportation and other things. Yeah, I think, as we talked about, to make any, to make our tax rate flat, as we've said, and Neil did the calculation originally, and it has stood the test of time and actually gotten a little bit worse, we probably, we have to cut about 3.4 to 3.5 million from the Marion Cross budget to keep our tax rate flat, which is basically the equivalent, actually, it's more than, because it's only 3.2 million of our entire regular ed budget. So, you know, that's, when I call this Act 127 punitive to Norwich, I think, you know, that's why I keep using that term, because even though our waitings have changed, the impact of the waitings basically means that we would have to close down Marion Cross to not have a tax rate increase, which seems extreme. I do think, and, you know, I think that, you know, some of this might be, anyways, do I have, I'll turn it over to comments and questions first, and then, we have an hour and a half to talk about what we want to do.
Can I put on my clerk hat and suggest a potential loophole, at least in terms of our April 15th deadline, which is if the budget vote fails, as presented, my understanding is you have no set date by which you need to warn a revised budget meeting, and I don't know when the last second hail mary passes for voting on a revised budget, but that would be an option, to get around the April 15th deadline.
Okay.
Just saying.
I guess that would go into the auspices that we put this forward, thinking it might fail, which, and I have been getting a lot of emails, as the chair, I guess, from townspeople on both sides, right? I've gotten the "How can we save Marion Cross?" emails to, "I'm living on a, you know, fixed income, and 18, you know, even 15% increase is better than an 18% increase." I mean, there is a lot on the table here, which I keep saying this, but none of us signed as volunteer school board members to be in this situation. Does anyone else have any questions?
Questions only, or comments?
Either or.
Just given the point of the meeting, I just wanted to make sort of my viewpoint on it clear. So, I'm not in favor of changing the date for the budget vote, or the budget, for three reasons. First, I believe in the budget. It was constructed with a lot of care. It's reasonable in its spending. It's been deliberated upon. And when the state asked for help, this school board answered the call. The school board made sizable cuts in the form of delaying spending on our physical plant, which are investments that are, at some point in the future, are going to have to be made. Second, I prefer the maximum number of Norwich residents to vote, and I'd be concerned that pushing it to a special election would likely reduce the number of voters, reduce the number of voters would potentially skew the vote, and I want to hear from the maximum number of townspeople. Third, I think we need to have a better understanding of the state policy environment, and the wishes of Norwich residents prior to making fundamental changes to our school system. So, MCS and Dresden are well-known for their high-quality education, and I think changing that potentially to the detriment of our town should not be done lightly. If the town votes down the budget, like any school board in Vermont, we'll have to deal with the consequences of that, and come back to the table, and deal with the message that we've received from our neighbors. But, I think we have listened, we've done our part, and we've constructed a reasonable budget, and we should go to the townspeople with it. And so, that's currently where I start this meeting. I'm always open to the opinions of my colleagues, but I just want to get that on the table.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a point of clarification of one thing that you said, that with this new percentage, instead of the 5% cap, like with 850 passing, we still need to make $3.5 million in cuts to have any, to have a flat tax rate, correct? I mean--
No, that changes every time the yield changes. That number changes. So, right now, that's what I was just doing, because we keep saying these numbers, but every time the yield, when the yield goes up, the amount you have to cut would come down.
Right.
So, right now, in order to have, that's what I was playing with numbers over here, in order to have a flat rate, the cut would be approximately, it's going to be about 3.125.
Million.
I'm trying to get to the zero.
Okay.
And close that 3.125.
Okay. So, a little less than the 3.5, but still over $3 million in cuts.
To be, to be, without the discount.
To be flat.
Without the discount, to be flat.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then, a follow-up question for that is, we very rarely go to the voters with a flat budget. Is that something that, like, what does that buy us, if we were to do that? And, which I think Neil may be the best person to answer that. I don't know. But, so, that's one of the parts of that. But, then, the second part is, if we come in with our usual increase of around 4%, is that kind of where we normally?
So, are you, sorry, Lisa, are you talking expense increase or tax rate increase?
Tax rate increase. Like, I just am kind of like, I feel like we rarely come in flat. Like, you know, like, that doesn't seem like a goal that has ever been achieved in my history of living in Norwich. I mean, I could be wrong. I mean, maybe if I went back, but, so, I'm wondering if the discussion should be about keeping it flat, or if it should be keeping it whatever it normally is. So, yeah, Jamie, or whatever. Sorry, Garrett.
I mean, Jamie can weigh in, too, and I'll just be--
Okay. So, let me--
Go ahead.
So, it's very difficult, I think Neil would correct.
Right.
You can't project what percentage of increase is going to happen on the tax rate.
Right.
Because you can't predict what the yield is.
We don't know what the CLA is.
The yield changes, the minute the yield changes, $38, we drop a penny. If it goes up 38 bucks, we go down a penny.
Right.
Okay, so, the yield is everything.
Right.
Right?
And we won't know what that is until June-ish?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the thing you can control is your percentage of increase on your expenditures.
Right.
Right? So, that is the piece you can control. Right now, you know, we're sitting, and it depends on whether you're talking Marion Cross alone, because that's what you can control, right, without Dresden.
Right.
You know, so, those are two different conversations.
Okay.
Jamie, since you are hopefully contributing to this, when it comes to those things that we can control, until we, before we get into the Vermont Education Finance System, which has de-linked local spending choices and moving up the tax rates, this budget reflects very good control over what we can actually control, correct? The rate of increase in our budget is quite low.
It's higher this year than it normally is, but that is, again, because of the result of three years of stalled contracts, all coming to fruition at one year.
Yeah. Given that we address those in the appropriate way.
Absolutely. So, yes, you've controlled other areas of expenditures in order to try to keep some of this, you know, down. Can we make changes in other areas? I think you've discussed them before. You discussed them at the Budget Committee level. You know, will it hurt? Yes, it will change things.
I mean, Lisa, I mean, I think in general, the tax rate increase, because I've got all the data here, going back 10 years since I started following this, I think has been anywhere between a slight fall in our tax rate--
Okay.
--to about 5% increase.
Okay.
Neil, you've been all around longer than I have, but that seems to be about the, after everything settles out, and we get all the numbers from the state, and we actually get our tax bills, I believe it's been anywhere from kind of negative 1%, you know, five or six years ago, to, you know, upwards of a 5% tax rate increase. I think, as Jamie said, I mean, the only thing that we know now is the current yield that they've given us. And to get a 5% tax increase with the discount, you'd probably have to trim 1.4, 1.2 million. I mean, it's more than what we could--
Right.
It's more than what we could do. I think, I mean, I think, you know, one of the questions that we, again, I think, maybe we also take the conversation just to, you know, what could be done if we, and, again, this doesn't mean we need to do this today, right? And maybe we decide to, you know, let things settle out at the state level first, and then decide if we need to make these decisions over the next, for next budget season. But, again, I think there's also just limits on what we can and can't do. So, based on the state guidelines, you know, we had Sean do that analysis, which would result, I think--
Right.
--in like four sections, which would get the sections up to an average of about 20 kids per section. You know, again, that could be four FTEs, but then you get into a question, which I would maybe ask Jamie here real-time, is, is if you let go of an FTE, are there also costs associated with, you know, pension type of thing?
Our costs.
Our costs, do we have to carry in the budget going forward? Just because we don't usually, we don't usually lay people off, right? So--
Right, but you don't have, it's reduction in force. You don't have other associated costs by doing riffs.
Okay.
Right? I mean, all of the all-in costs, which is salary benefits, the whole nine yards, I'll back that up. Unless of, well, normally, you riff from the bottom up, so you riff new to old, right?
Right.
So, people who are tenured, who are up here, who have the most years in, right, you don't usually, you know, reduce in force. If you, if you went over the next year or two, and you didn't backfill open positions as people retired, then you might have some costs coming in for retirement benefits, if they've earned those, right? But, you could offset some of that with, you know, the larger amount of not backfilling an open position, if it's one that you don't have to carry. But, as far as additional costs, there are usually none that you carry, right, unless it creates a burden within the room, which I think you mentioned somewhere else. If you have a difficult class, and you need, you know, additional aid or whatever, I mean, you have to weigh all of those pieces.
Right. And that, and I think that's something that, Jamie, and, again, we're not, let me just be clear to the audience, too, we're not talking about doing a riff right now. I think it's helping the board get our hands around, if we were to reduce the sections and get us up to the state required minimum, so let's just say four, you know, could, I mean, I had assumptions here of around, you know, 115,000 of savings, but that was taking our total education--
Right. Taking your highest.
Taking our highest. And my point is, is, and, again, this might not be the place, time and the place for that, but my guess is, is that number of, the savings could actually be a lot, would actually be a lot lower. And the reason I'm asking this is because, you know, that could also influence people's decision around the table. If we say, listen, based on the last in, first out math, and the fact that, hey, Garrett and his numbers was using the, everything, including classroom supplies, and everything is only going to be salaries and healthcare, really, and the number's actually like 75 times four, then we truly are dealing with a couple percent in potential lots of pain for the school, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you exactly what those numbers are. But, I'll--
So, Michael?
So, I just want to be careful here in this discussion, the way it was set up. There's always difference of what you're trying to do, and then how you're trying to do it.
Right.
And the meeting is like, what do you want to do about the vote that would normally take place on town meeting day? And then, depending on the decision made on that, there's a whole bunch of variables. For me, when I look at the handy-dandy FY '25 projected budget book and exhibits, and cruise through pages 12, 13, and 14, I see with the Dresden articles, a 4.63% increase, because we dealt with a lot of salary pressures and contractual pressures. And then, I believe on pages 13 and 14, I see for the Norwich School District, per pupil spending changing, going slightly down. And for page 14, an increase in per pupil spending for the whole school district, with the Dresden stuff going up only $72.42%. And so, I'm not, I'd want the board to make a decision whether it's going to walk away from that budget, or speculating what we might do to address the budget if we reopen that can of worms.
Yeah, those are using the long-term weighted average adjusted ADM that the state put out for last year, you know, so we can do apples to apples.
I want to make sure we're on the same page. When I hear you say that, and I don't envy you having to try to help us wrestle with--
No, that's fine.
The cone of uncertainty right now on all the data and all the information is extreme.
Of course.
We make the best decision we can with whatever data we happen to have, with whatever public policy happens to exist--
Absolutely.
--when we make the decision, right?
And, so, I totally get that, Michael. I guess where I'm coming with this discussion a little bit personally is, is I think I'd like to kind of understand, if we were to delay this, which would mean we then go down the road in future meetings of looking at where we could make cuts, I guess if I'm going to vote to delay this, I'd want to have my arms a little bit around, I was hoping to get my arms a little bit around tonight, if we were to get to that point in two or three weeks from now, and we said, okay, we just delayed the vote, now let's dig in and start making some cuts, then all of a sudden, we're like, well, wait a minute. If we're going to do what we can do, which is maybe bring the class sizes up, we lose four FTEs, and it's only going to save us four times 60, or 240,000, and we're going to save 2% of the tax rate, I'd probably say, you know what? Let's not do that, and let's wait for the state to roll it down, right? And figure out where we are with more information, because unfortunately, as I think Neil's correctly said in the past, we may not know, the yield may not get finalized till June. I mean, it's going to bounce all over the place, right? And then, of course, the legislators have told us that they may make some changes to this, but we don't know that. So, I guess where I'm going with this is, is if we're going to vote to move it, and then look at some cuts, the trick is, is, you know, Lisa just asked, if we want to have a 5% tax increase, it's, you know, 1.4 million, we're never going to make those cuts based on, unless we blow through all the recommendations, or somehow get rid of all of our busing, and, I mean, it's impossible. So, anyways.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
One more factor that we don't know is, the reappraisals are happening March, April, May, correct?
So, it says in the town report that the reappraisal will be effective with the April 1st 2024 grant list. And I don't know, I don't know how that all--
Not April 1st.
It's the April 1st 2024 grant list.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding, based on conversations I've had with Cheryl, is that they would anticipate that the August tax bills will reflect the reappraised value.
The reappraisals.
And how does that factor into calculating? I just don't understand.
Yeah, that's what my question--
Does the CLA interact with what we're doing, and then a percent tax increase?
Right. So, in, what will, what should, what will happen is that that CLA number will change upon reappraisal, and it will go up somewhere. If everything was, you know, done perfectly, the CLA would end up at 100.
And then, what, I'm sorry, what would that then bring a tax rate?
Well, that would drop the tax rate increase down--
Significantly.
Significantly. So, you'd be looking at, you know, like a--
I'm sorry? Must have kidded it off.
I don't want to, I don't--
It's the third time they're calling me.
So, I just want to--
But, I want to be careful about that, too, right? Because you can't talk about the rate with also talking about the value of your house.
Right.
And so, it's those two numbers combined, which is the tax burden.
Right.
And when the, when the rate goes down, because the CLA went up, it typically also means it's because your house value increased.
Right.
All that's being equally, when, I mean, this is the way I've been thinking about it, and when you listen to the state tax guy at this House Ways and Means, right? So, the CLA and the yield are directly related. So, when the CLA's been going down over the years, that's why actually the yield's been going up. So, as Neil just said, what should happen, all that's being equal, assuming everyone's house value goes up by the exact same as the overall town grant list goes up, which it's not, because some houses will be reappraised more or less than the overall. But, as long as everyone's home value goes up by the overall increase of the grant list, technically, there should be no change in your tax bill that you get in dollars. The tax rate will change, will go up, down, but your house value will go up. So, your tax bill that you actually write a check for should stay the same if the CLA's working properly, which I think it is. I think--
So, when you say stay the same, sorry, you just mean it will go up by whatever--
So, if you're paying, if you're paying $20,000 a year to the, to the town for--
And we see a 20% increase for next year?
--property tax increase? If, yeah, the CLA, you will still write a check for $20,000, even after the CLA comes down, up again, and your house value goes up, you'll still write the same check.
Yeah, and, if I may, just two quick comments. I don't think our house has been reviewed yet. So, if the listers or appraisal firms watch it, it really isn't that nice.
So if the listers or appraisal firms watch it, it really isn't that nice. Small sorts of problems inside that you're probably not aware of. Just on what you see on solo. Just putting the plug in there. The CLA yield conversation is one that I was, when I used to work on tax policy, I always thought was a funny one. Because, you know, state policymakers would say, oh, well, we did this, you'll do the CLA and then your rate, we're going to go down ten percent. Well, if, your tax bill may still go up a couple hundred dollars. I've never met a taxpayer who said, geez, it's gone up five hundred bucks, but I feel so much better because the rate is lower.
Yeah.
It's a lower rate on a higher base. And then where I get nervous in that conversation is,
Right.
everybody's house is different. And so it redistributes across, you know, if your house is gone and you happen to live on Pick on a Street, Elm Street, you know what I mean? Like, it can be wildly different results. And so I just want to be really careful that there are things within our control, things without our control. And I would, I think, you know, Norwich desperately needs the reappraisal to try to reset those values. I don't think it provides like generalized relief in any way. It would just redistribute. Others may have different opinions, but I just.
For the most part, it's the same, okay.
But even if we weren't doing a reappraisal, even if we weren't adjusting the CLA and you were just doing a reappraisal, right? Your house would be going up or down based on the differences of everyone else anyways.
Relative value.
If you live in New Hampshire. So anyways. Jamie, so how wildly off are my numbers as far as reductions?
So with the information that we discussed at one of our earlier budget committee meetings, when we discussed class sizes, if we were to, and this may have changed because this was in October, right? Okay. But based on the information I had in October, it would be four positions with yield, four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay. Yes, that would, that would drop us from about eighteen percent to about fourteen percent tax rate increase.
A hundred-and-ten thousand, cut. A cut of a hundred-and-ten thousand takes your tax rate down two cents. For every hundred-and-ten you cut, it'll go down two cents.
Which is a percentage of?
I don't know, I didn't go that far.
That's a percent.
So.
So that makes sense. So it's one percent for every hundred-and-ten thousand.
If you look at exhibit nine, which I put in the books that I ran off for you, because those are the latest and greatest courses. Not anymore because the yield changed this afternoon, so whatever. Exhibit nine, on the bottom, in the middle there, it shows you, like, so if you added a hundred thousand, the tax rate impact would be one-point-eight-three cents, right? So, when you add a hundred and ten, add the two together, and it basically, it's like two-point, two-point-oh-oh-one cent. Okay, so this, this is, just makes it easier for you based on the all yield, it's probably even better now that the yield went up.
Right.
The yield goes up thirty-eight dollars and you drop a penny.
So I'm thinking, it, it looks like, I mean, again, maybe just silly luck as far as the two cents, but basically a hundred-and-ten thousand is one percent. Two-hundred-and-twenty thousand is two percent, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. So every one-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars of cuts is one percent after the discount.
Yeah, pretty much.
So the four FTEs, I mean, we're, you know, roughly a hundred grand per, you're talking four percent off, right? So.
Four cents, four percent.
Right.
You're talking four percent off, which is why I was saying
About eight cents.
fourteen percent increase instead of eighteen percent increase in the tax rate. Again, assuming the yield stays what it is right now, which we don't really know.
Right, and it, yes. Because this is based on the yield at nine-seven-seven-five, not at nine-eight-nine-nine.
Oh, where's the nine-eight-nine-nine number come from?
It came out today.
Oh, okay, all right, we just saved a couple then. Things are getting better.
That's what I say.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize it came out at nine-eight-nine-nine today.
What, three-point, that's what we were having a conversation about, three cents.
So what's the new, so three percent down?
Hold on, I'm going to let Neil's go, he's going to do it himself.
Well, it, it wasn't, yeah, so there was, I, I mean, I want to caution, I, I think following the numbers is good, right? We want to make sure that we're aware of what's going on and what the legislature is considering. I do think to a certain extent, when they publish these numbers, they're signaling to schools, this is where we think things are going. So to see the yield number go up is a good thing, right? I think a lot of that is, is more coming from them looking for increased revenues into the ed fund than the anticipation that they've got that school districts by and large are going to reduce significantly. The reason that I raised my hand though was two things. One is because Sean has his hand up online. And two, we've got a fair number of people here in the room and we've got thirty-nine folks on the Zoom. And I wonder if we want to just take some opportunity if folks want to speak. But I would go to Sean first, maybe, Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I was just let into the thing, so I'm not actually seeing anyone there. So yeah, if you guys will let Sean in.
Well, I think I've been in. Can you hear me?
You're muted though, Sean.
I'm not muted on my end.
Here in the room, do we have, are the owls got audio going?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear Sean. Can anyone hear me besides Sean?
Well, Greg, we can talk to each other.
Can you hear someone?
That doesn't help.
Can you hear me now?
While we're waiting, Gary, not right now, but before, like after we hear from people, but before we close this meeting, I would like to hear kind of the upside of delaying, like, I'm trying to get my, my, getting from the state. Because I feel like that was an important part of our discussion at the last meeting when we made the, making the building.
Can you hear anything now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you can hear me now. I can hear myself technically a lot. Hey, one of you needs to mute there. That's better. A, a couple of things. When you start talking about cutting class sizes, you have to also think about increasing ed assistance. Because if you remember, over the last several years, we've made a choice to, to lower the class size with teaching staff, but we also did that by cutting positions that were in the support piece. So when you start thinking, when we start talking about putting twenty kids or more in those kindergarten first grade rooms, if we want to maintain any resemblance of the quality that we produce now, then we're going to have to start thinking about ed assistance that are going to be in those classrooms just to give some support. So I think that's one thing that needs to be factored in, that cutting a staff member includes the addition of a staff member at a lower rate, but that's an also an additional cost. So I think, the other thing is, I, I hear ideas being tossed out about what we should cut. I think having been now in Norwich in this position for five years, the community really wants to say, so I, I think we would have to be extremely thoughtful in letting people come in and express their opinions before we just decided like the pre-K program was going to go, or we're going to reduce, or we're going to increase class sizes, or start looking at specials. I would, I would want us to be thoughtful and really take some time about looking at what is our program, what do we want to accomplish with it? And what is the community's support? Because I think we could also have the negative effect of cutting our budget and having people not vote for it because it doesn't support what we would, what Norwich residents want our schools to be able to, to do for children. So I think we need to think about that part too. And I also wonder about what's going to happen in the next year. If, if we're talking about two different things, one, getting through this year, and two, waiting to see what happens next year and making adjustments as that starts to roll out. Just my thoughts for you.
Great, thank you, Sean. And yes, just so everyone's aware, so I believe about five years ago, we had about twenty-one regular ed and special ed. And now we're down to, I think, six-point-seven. So that is an important consideration that the savings are going to be offset by some of that. And just to be clear, Sean, thank you. We're, tonight, just so everyone's clear, we're not sitting here looking to actually decide on cuts tonight. I think tonight is the decision about whether we delay the warning, reevaluate and either down the road, we, I mean, we could just wait till more things shake out and still not make any cuts and put up to another vote before April fifteenth as well. But I think between now and then, we would be doing that thoughtful work with the community and Sean about whether we want to make cuts. It's really, I mean, I don't, it's really hard because we are all working on your imperfect information and making.
Can I ask a historical question that I don't have the knowledge for? Which is what magical things happen between now and when we would have to warn this on March twenty-fifth if we decide to delay the vote?
Uh, not much. I mean, I think it's a thing, you'll, you'll get some updated projections regarding the yield number, but that's about the only thing that you're going to have available to you. You still won't know what the final yield number is because that won't be set until well after the vote's taken.
Jamie?
And you might know how many budgets went down in flames.
That's true.
So I'm sorry, is there other, I can't see, for some reason my zoom is not.
Two hands of attendees online that are up right now.
So why don't we go, why don't we continue working through?
Go the online ones?
Are they in person?
Or anyone in person, obviously, if you guys are here in person, want to.
Okay, so Russ, Russ North is enabled for, for talking now, if you wanted to.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Having moved here to Norwich this summer, I want to thank you all for what is truly a thankless job, especially this year. And the level of communication that you've put out is amazing. Having said all that, I would encourage you to go forward with the vote or the, the budget as originally voted. Because for those citizens that are going to be really affected by a couple percentage increase, many of them may be protected by the income sensitivity provisions that come along with the property tax credit. And I'm not going to like a fourteen percent increase much better than I'm going to like an eighteen percent increase. All both, for both, but you're really not accomplishing all that much.
Makes a lot of sense, thank you, Russ. Appreciate the comments.
And now Rachel.
I, did, did you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us? Yes, thank you very much for the comments. I don't know if anyone has any comments back for us, but Russ, we appreciate it and that your comments make perfect sense. So thank you very much.
Rachel is offset, if you want to go.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, yes, I would just like to echo Russ's comment. As a parent, a volunteer, a former teacher, I will keep it brief, but it honestly shocks the conscience to think about increasing the class sizes in the way that you're discussing. So I would encourage you to put forth the budget that you have previously decided on. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Great, thank you, Rachel.
Karen Trobley, Fort Star Lake, Norwich, and teacher at Marion Cross. Um, I want to thank you guys so much for this work that you've done. None of us expected you to be in this position. We understand, I think all teachers and community members understand that this isn't something that you caused, but you're working very hard to mitigate it and figure it out. I would encourage you to go forward with the vote. I think that, I don't under, I don't see a reason not to find out from the townspeople, and I want to echo what Michael said, that I think that it's important that we get the majority of people voting, that will vote, and delaying a vote might change that. And what I'm hearing tonight is that the amount of time you could delay really wouldn't allow for much work anyway. So I just want to thank you for all the work you put into the budget and think that we should move forward and present this to the town heads.
Great, thank you, Karen. Any other? Yes.
Right, Gillian Van Als, two-ten Kerwin Hill Road, teacher at Marion Cross and parent of two students at Marion Cross. My family moved here two and a half years ago. We chose Norwich because of the schools, that's a really common story. And I'm very concerned if there are cuts made that are going to impact the quality of education, that people are going to move out, that the property values are going to go down, and people are still going to lose their money. So I would rather lose my money on an increased tax rate than I would on a decrease in my property value. And I think that if people understand that equation, that we have neighboring communities that are significantly lower property values, it's because of the school. And, and that's something that we need to have in the conversation. I hope we do go ahead with the vote and see what the community thinks. But I think that that's something that I haven't heard discussed. But that would be a concern I would have, that if we, if we do start gutting the education that we're offering now, and I'm looking around and I see parents that are new to the community here tonight, I think that people feel a similar way than I do, that we chose this community largely because of the quality of the school. And if that goes down, people are not going to want to be here. And then their property values are going to go down. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
A few more hands online now. Can you, Brian Low? Did Brian disappear? Put his hand out. Yeah, you've got Wendy Teller.
Hi, this is Wendy Teller Ellsberg. I am a speech language pathologist at Marion Cross and a Norwich resident with two current children at Marion Cross. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, just wanted to echo what has been said. I thank you all so much for your service and your tireless work. I would hate to see a, a vote delayed. I agree that we should ask the townspeople whether they can tolerate the current situation. I, I also would like to see Norwich work, and I want to thank those of you who have been working so hard on this already. I'd like to see Norwich work towards increasing the diversity of our town and finding creative, positive solutions for improving our status in this statewide calculation. But I don't think it's a positive way to do that to slash four teachers' jobs. And as a Marion Cross employee and as a Marion Cross parent, it would really just break my heart to see four of my colleagues lose their jobs. I don't think that that's a proactive solution, and I think it would have unintended detrimental morale consequences that just would be so awful, both as a parent and as an employee. So, thank you all for your work. I just, this is a scary situation, you're all doing a really wonderful job. And I hope we can resolve it with a positive solution. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Wendy.
Jordan.
Can you hear me now? Great, thanks. Very simple question on my end. I'm just curious if the unique interstate Dresden School District dynamic impacts how the ADMs are determined for Norwich? And if the state really takes that into account in terms of what our kind of weighting and obligation looks like relative to other towns?
Do you want me to take that, Jamie, or do you want to take it?
Well, I didn't know if Neil wanted to.
Neil?
Well, I mean, the short answer is it doesn't, right?
It doesn't affect the weighting of the students.
Yeah, the, the students are counted the same way that they would. You could, sort of, in this regard, you could consider the Richmond Middle School and Hanover High School to be Vermont schools. The, the weighting is, is the same.
Neil, I'm, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but thinking, reflecting on Jordan's question, the short answer in my mind to the question of when Vermont's legislature crafted this law, did they think about our interstate school district and its peculiarities? I guess the answer would be no. And it particularly is difficult for us because our spending decisions are not entirely our own. Because after this meeting, there's a.
Because after this meeting, there's a combined school board meeting where a lot of the spending that we pick up is subject to the vote of that board, which is not majority Norwich residents. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, but I don't necessarily think that the interstate district is that different than if you compare ourselves to, for example, like a supervisory union in Vermont that may consist of multiple towns that all feed into the same school system. Each of those towns is gonna have individual tax rates, and each of those voters is gonna have the ability to, you know, determine whether or not they, they think that that SU spending is appropriate. So while our system is unique, I think when we're starting to look at this, though, from that particular perspective that you just articulated, it's not terribly unique.
But it makes our decisions here, unfortunately, because we, I mean, this was part of our testimony, right? I mean, in order to cut a dollar from the Norwich budget, we have to cut three dollars from the Dresden budget. And when I say Norwich budget, not MCS, but the actual Norwich tax education, right? MCS plus Dresden. We have to take, we have to cut three dollars from Dresden. And we don't have the votes over there at our seven to five. So that is why, you know, I am also looking ahead and panicking a bit because, you know, this year we benefited because the, all the debt came off in Dresden this year. And that will start to come back on. So I think we do need to realize that the Dresden budget will continue to probably increase a few percentage points a year once we start implementing some of the strategic plan and some of the funding. Because that debt was for twenty-year-old stuff, right? Both here at the high school and elsewhere. So everyone's been waiting for that debt to roll off, and that's why the Dresden budget is up zero percent for our assessment this year. Anyone else on, is there any other hands?
Not at the moment, no.
And I appreciate those comments. I mean, I think, again, I think where I'm coming, where I just as, you know, as a resident and obviously a huge supporter of MCS, you know, I think I'm just looking at this and saying, listen, you know, a five or six hundred thousand dollar house that currently the tax rate in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three was ten or eleven thousand, you know, that's gonna jump up to twelve to fourteen this year. And over the next, once this gets fully rolled out with our discounts, you could be looking at seventeen to twenty thousand dollars a year of taxes for a half million dollar home in Norwich, which is, you know, I, I know we all appreciate. Unfortunately, this is the problem that the legislature has put us in, and that's why folks like me are, you know, it's very frustrating because this is what Act one twenty-seven was intended to do, which is distribute wealth to other parts of the state, so.
Devin had a comment.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Devin Moke. I'm wearing a bunch of hats. My most important hat is my mom hat. I have a pre-K child, I have a kindergarten child. I also have an MCS diploma in the form of a T-shirt from nineteen ninety-six. And I work here at the high school. I'm the director of counseling, and I'm also the equity steward here in this building, where I make quite a bit more than the Marion Cross teachers for doing the same job with more sedentary students. So I just wanna thank so much my colleagues at Marion Cross for the work that you do. I'm here to say, please do put that budget forward for all the reasons that have already been enumerated, particularly around getting the townspeople's feedback. I think a downside of waiting could be more eloquent vitriol on the listserv, which we don't need, and which those of us who, you know, are working and parenting don't have time to respond to in a tada tat, but can really sort of misguide those who are able to read occasionally around where public sentiment is. So I'd like to curb that. I also wanna offer a reframe, might be useful, might be offensive, I guess it just kinda depends on the ears. But I really do see this as an opportunity. I think losing privilege often feels like a punishment because it's really nice to have unearned things that you feel entitled to. But what the state is trying to do is redistribute some wealth. We are such a wealthy town. Our students are the most prepared for school, their parents are the most educated. And we are the most economically advantaged. We are basically operating a pri, a more private than private school in our town in that we have less economic diversity than a lot of independent schools whose parents are paying like forty K for their kid to be exposed to that environment. Doubling the taxes on a half a million dollar house that, like, ten years ago Crowley would have sold for two hundred K and like may or may not have really been improved, is still a very, very good price for an independent school quality school. And when I say independent school, what I mean is a low student teacher ratio. I mean, a student-centered, truly, truly student-focused, passionate group of educators who themselves are educated. That's what we're talking about when I say independent school quality. I'm not like a real fan of independent school, and I'm done.
Great, thank you very much for those comments. Hand up.
My name is Lee Emerson, and I am retired. And my kids went through Marion Cross in their, I don't know, two thousand, early two thousands, something like that. Anyway, I just had a question about kind of a unintended consequence of the, the homestead versus non-homestead rate. And the fact that if they get too out of whack, where people who are residents, full-time residents, have such a higher rate than the second homeowners, would, would that affect the fact that sec, that people, families might not, might be turned off or scared away by the tax rates, but not second homeowners? So we end up with a, a town full of second homeowners, which I personally find on my road seems to be the case, with a lot of empty houses. So is there any plan to, to fix that at all? Or is, is there any, any help in that direction? I mean, it does seem like it's a trend. And then we have less kids, and if the cost for people goes up.
So I can, I can address that quickly for you, and we, I'm happy to talk about it later. So the answer to your question is yes. Back when Tom Cannon was the chair, I know he proposed some of our, we had come up with this idea as a board and had, because the homestead versus non-homestead's been, you know, anywhere between maybe five and ten percent difference. This, as you, as you rightly point out, is exasperating that. And now I think it's like upwards of seventeen percent difference. We actually went forth this year, and we actually had a VSB resolution that didn't pass because I think when it got, and Neil can weigh in here, but it seemed to me when it got to the time to pass the resolutions, it was a tax resolution. Oh my gosh, people hate taxes, and it became complicated, and why are we really focused on this? We put together a presentation where it stated that about, there's a thirty-four percent or almost eighty towns in the state of Vermont have this situation where the homestead's lower. We've sent, I've sent emails to both Jim Maslin and others. The feedback initially seems to be that it's one of the things that they're looking at, but it's very complex from their, what they believe because Act sixty, which was the original Education Funding Act, basically gave the state the ability to set a state-ride non-homestead rate. And in order to get rid of that, you would basically, they're telling me you'd have to change it, and it doesn't allow for states to set the tax rate for non-homestead. I said, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm saying that you set it as a number or the greater of. I don't understand the problem. They said, there's still complexity, we would have to make a third tax rate for commercial. Anyways, I just, we, I had probably sent ten emails last month to Jim Maslin on this one. And by the way, the Woodstock folks on the testimony, he had the exact same question and was up arms as well because you're absolutely right. The whole issue is, is that from our perspective, and you go to New Hampshire, towns that are unlike Winnipeg or whatever, everyone pays the same tax rate. There are towns, unfortunately, that have a lower non-homestead rate, non-residential rate than, right? That's just the way it works out because of how it's moved over the years. Anyways, it's very complicated, but you're absolutely right, and that has been our argument, that it is encouraging, you know.
Well, you're losing, they're saying it's bringing, you know, if we get this, if we bring other people into the town and get more diversity, this is causing the opposite effect.
And even worse, it could be causing bad actors and LLCs to exist. And I mean, it's been one of my theories, maybe I'm gonna move to Florida for five months, six months, seven months out of the year and come here for the summers, right? I mean, why, I wouldn't do that. Like, my wife and I have been talking about that now, when the kids leave, anyways.
You know me already, but Linda Dante, I had my six kids go to Marion Cross and also Hanover High School and Richmond Middle School. Currently here as the council advisor. And I just wanna say, you know, when I was, many decades ago, Neil remembers this, I was on the school board. I think even before, you were on the school board. And it was around Act sixty, and even then I struggled with the formula. It's even more confusing now. And, and I, I regret, certainly, this is hard for me to hear because for those of you that have just moved to Norwich, you have to know, our boards have been struggling with trying to get affordable sort of, you know, tax rate for people that live in Norwich that are coming, but also for people that have lived there all their lives. And one of the losses we've had as a town is we've had, we've lost our roots. You know, we've lost the people that homesteaded that property and first founded it. So, you know, we always used to, I mean, it's, it's kind of not a funny joke. You know, you move to Norwich because you wanna live there, because you like what you see. And then you come, and the biggest, one of the biggest fights in town was paving the driveway at the Marion Cross school. Because when we moved there, it was dirt, and we wanted a dirt road. So the culture of the place is what we're fighting to, for too. It's not just our school. And so I just wanna say, this is not a new problem. Certainly, it's exacerbated. But one thing that's true in Norwich is we go back to our people and we ask them. And then the other thing is, how can we as a people think about, what do we need to do in our town? So I'm kind of on a move to, after the budget, what can we do, us here in the board, to prompt the town to maybe look at, you know, again, is, are we talking about changing our housing situation? You know, how can we get more diversity into our community? How can we support that and keep our, our, what we all love about Norwich at the same time? So just wanted to add that, thank you.
Thank you very much for those perspectives. All right.
I just have one comment about the, obviously.
Oh, sorry, name?
I'm sorry, Elizabeth Howard is my name.
Great.
We all see the importance of affordable housing for low-income as well as middle-income people, which is all kind of falling by the wayside. But I think it's really important that we have a business plan with real numbers when we talk about solving the school problem with having more children at the low-income side because the whole argument is that it's twice as expensive to educate those children. So it's sort of a circular argument to say, we need more low-income children at the school to balance our taxes. So I'm just frustrated when I hear that is posed as a solution to our economic problems. It's a culture problem. But I, I think you should be really cautious to hear that as, this is how we're gonna solve our problem because you can't build your way back. There's gotta be a huge economic investment, so anyway.
That is a very valid point. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Anita Drake. First, thank you guys all. This is incredibly hard, I'm sure. I have one question, just when thinking about pushing the budget vote out or, or taking it to the town. Is it, is the Dresden budget have to be warned and voted? So I think that would, so yes. I think that would cause a lot of confusion if we then have another vote. And I think you would, you know, lose a lot of voices in that confusion. So I urge you to put it to the voters.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else online, Neil? Sorry, my Zoom, I can see myself.
I don't see any handles, frankly, no.
Okay. You know, I mean, I mean, we'll just talk, you know, we'll come up for a vote here in a second. I think, you know, just so people are aware as well as what we're coming up with, so brainstorming. So obviously, we've got the local, right? Obviously, we saw two sides of the coin there as far as bringing, you know, more diversity into the town and how that would help with the ADM. And then obviously, yes, the challenge about that and the fact that it does cost more to educate, which is why. So you're right, it's a very complicated situation. And then, of course, with this going on now and the tax rates going up, I mean, it just makes it even harder to create low-income. I mean, the whole thing just kind of is, I mean, all of us have been sitting around the table just saying, you know, that it's kind of starts to spin out of our control and actually gets worse. Again, I think from our townspeople, I think, you know, I would encourage everybody listening to please continue to contact our legislature, legislators. You know, unfortunately, and probably more than just Rebecca and Jim, Rebecca and Jim Maslin, who are both of our local ones, because I think they both hear our situation as loud and clear. It's some of the other representatives around the state that, again, I'm not sure if they care so much about our situation. But I think, you know, I, I've been working with Jay, for example. We've come up with, you know, he had sent me all of the Title One, Title Two, and Title Four funding, for example. There's fifty million dollars that comes from the federal government. Marion Cross gets forty, sorry, sixty-four thousand of that. So a lot less than our share of ADM, meaning that, and those are all based on the exact same criteria that Act one twenty-seven's based on. So my point is, is if a town's receiving federal funds and they're benefiting from Act one twenty-seven through additional tax capacity, how is that not double dipping, right? Like, that, that money should almost come into the state education fund and then be distributed via Act one twenty-seven. So, you know, I've sent emails to Emily Kornheiser and to Rebecca and to Jim, all CC'd on it, suggesting things like that. I mean, I don't know if fifty mil, I think fifty million would be, you know, anything kind of helps. The residential thing, again, I've sent emails on that. We've, we did a presentation to the VSB, I mean, which I sent off to those same folks as well. So I know Rebecca's talked about, you know, she's correctly has pointed out that if you go back and you read the weighting study, the weighting study said you should implement these weightings, but you should also need to pay close attention to how the funds based on the weightings are distributed. The legislator did, legislators did A, but they did not pay attention to the distribution, which is probably why a lot, I mean, I guess the good news is, in a way, is that even the towns that are getting additional task capacity are actually also unhappy for reasons I'm not quite understanding right now. But they also seem to be seeing massive tax rate increases. I've talked to folks from one of the Burlington, uh, school board chair, or school board member at one of the Burlington districts to south of Burlington. They're seeing the same tax rate increases that they needed to cut to similar ways. They'd have to lay off a hundred teachers, which would completely disrupt. So I mean, there's a lot of problems that we're hoping that the legislature deals with through more than just raising taxes on wealthy again, which is another, anyways, it's, Michael?
So just one quick process question. If we were to hold the vote as scheduled, does this board need to take any action?
I think tonight we would just vote to, I mean, I think, do you think we need to? I was, I was coming into this meeting, Neil, thinking that we would vote to, as a board, to keep the budget as warned and put it forward to the town meeting. But you're right, if we're just gonna keep it.
I'm not presuming what any other member may do, but to the extent we have a budget and it's been properly warned, I was just trying to see what action we would be taking if that was the direction the board desired to go.
I, I did not, unfortunately, read all of the stuff that came from the, they, they sent three letters.
No action is necessary.
No action is necessary, okay.
I would agree. I think, I think what you would be looking for is if any, if any board member wanted to make a motion to delay the vote, you would entertain that motion and take a vote on it. But absent, you know, any motion being made to delay the vote, it moves forward as, as currently warned.
Okay. I mean, I personally, as the chair, I think, would say that if we're not gonna make a motion to delay the vote, that I think, you know, I would encourage people that we, at that, at this point, we are truly relying on our legislatures to hopefully make some changes to this. I think we also probably should work with Sean about saying, hey, let's put, you know, before we, if there are people that are leaving for any reason through retirement or whatever, that we should freeze that. And at least that's gonna reduce the potential pain if we don't get any movement in the yield and any change in the Act one twenty-seven over the course of the summer and make our lives hopefully a little bit easier next year. Because I think all of us are on the table. The last thing we wanna be doing is a riff of our teachers and especially some of the newer ones that have been hired that are, that are so beneficial, so.
So it seems like these are all really good things that we should take up at our next several board meetings. Right, so we can really spend some time digging into this and get a lot of community input in terms of what we could possibly do to reduce the budget.
Right, because I do think that at some point, you're right, to that point, I think, again, given the impending increases, and if nothing's changed. again, given the impending increases, and if nothing's changed, like, we do at least need to be maintaining somehow a flat budget. And unfortunately, a flat budget is actually a down budget, right? Because every year, healthcare's going up, step and tracks are going up, and costs are going up, right? So, this is, this is the challenge that we're all facing. A 5% or 10% increase to our budget every year is going to make what we're seeing, even if we accept this 18% increase now, it's just going to be getting worse and worse and worse. Lisa?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we, I'm making a motion, but I do feel that there, I have, I have a question, I think, for Neil, because you're the one that sort of raised it at the last meeting, we would discuss this, but also a comment, is I want to be clear, and I'm speaking for myself, but I have a feeling I'm speaking for my other four colleagues, too. None of us take an 18% tax increase lightly. We recognize that for a lot of people in town, that is problematic. That is problematic in terms of, like, you know, middle income. I think lower-income people will get the breaks that they deserve and that they've always gotten. I think where this, this affects people who tend to be middle-income people, who would be people who have children, who would be moving into our district, and we thus have made it a little bit harder to attract those families into our district. And I don't take that lightly, and I don't take the impact of it on my friends or my neighbors, my friends and neighbors, who have lived in town for forever and are, I guess what you would call, land-rich and income-poor. And this is a problem for that as well. So, I just, I just really want to be clear that with as many positive things as we have heard this evening, there is a downside to what would happen if this budget passes. I don't think that, you know, again, I also argue that property values would go down, and I think that long-term ramifications would happen, but there, I don't want to, I just want to make it clear that we're not taking that lightly. And then my other question is, the last time when we agreed to reduce some of the, the spending, the short-term spending in order to have a good, a good-faith effort for the Vermont legislature, do we feel that if we go forward, I think Neil was worried that we would have a target on our head from the legislature. Do, are we worried about that with this? Do we need to be concerned about that? That hasn't been something that was discussed this evening, and it was a very important part of what happened when we actually passed our budget. So, I'm just wondering if we are worried that going forward makes us look like inconsiderate people?
Neil can speak on this. I know the bigger question, Lisa, was when we had originally put the 1.25 in, and then we took that out, that was absolutely.
That was for the 5% cap.
Correct.
Right.
But staying at the 10%, so.
Right.
I would think that based on what we're putting forward here, which is a budget increase of 4.6% of expenses, that we've gotten around that. And I think, I know we all discussed this the last board meeting. I've talked to some school board members who did not do that and just stuck with it, and they regret it because I think they were like, you guys made the right decision by showing good faith and taking that away. Whether it'll pay off down the road, I don't know. But I think, I think to you, Neil, I mean, we've done that. We have already made that change. So, I think whether or not we put this budget forward, that's, this isn't really putting forth, whatever, a padded budget. This is not a padded budget by any stretch of the imagination.
I wasn't calling it that. I just.
Yeah, but that's what they were, that's what the legislature's calling these, right?
Right.
As far as when people were padding their budgets.
Right. Okay.
We have taken all the padding out. Yes, we have still kept the, some of the building upgrades in there, but I mean, we're talking, it's $100,000 extra, and it's to remove an oil tank that basically.
That has to happen.
That has to come out. It's being done with the other project, and it's also putting in some things that are reducing, making our building more efficient, which, again.
Saves money.
I don't know how you can not do that in this day and age when.
Okay. So, I guess that was important then to say, too, is just to talk about what this budget does and the fact that the building things are necessary and not extra, and in the long run, will hopefully save us some money. So, thank you.
And our building things are the bare minimum, I think, at this point. It really has been stretched out. Michael?
So, just very, very briefly, because I'm not going to make a motion. I'm fine with proceeding. I very much agree with Lisa about the tax rates. I've really appreciated in the comments tonight and on the list serve that people seem to understand that easy choices have left tap, right? We are stuck with nothing but very difficult choices, including on the tax rate. I also am really gratified to hear people say that they've appreciated the communication. I think Neil and Garrett and others have done a great job. And I would urge us to continue that because it's a moving target. The yield goes up, the yield goes down, the state makes a different move, other budgets change, and that makes the storytelling really complicated. So, it just means we need to be persistent in telling our story even as things change. And most importantly, thank you to everybody who showed up. I know everybody's busy, and getting feedback is super important, and I really appreciate it.
All right.
I had a quick comment.
Oh, good.
I just wonder about if the budget passes this year, if people are a little bit shocked by their tax increase, and then you have to say again, next year, okay, it's going to, it's not a one-year thing, you know? There's more of a likelihood that you'll have to take more drastic measures, that people are just going to be, you know, people may not be aware of what the consequences are. So, you know, it may.
Correct.
That's, yeah. Often, it's maybe a one-year thing, but it seems like it's not. It's a, it's been pretty bad for five years.
Yes, this is a big step increase that will continue. All right. Any other discussion questions? We also asked, by the way, where we're landing here?
Can I move to adjourn?
You can move to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? All right, and we're all here, so.
Thanks for being here.
We have adjourned at 6:52. Thank you, everyone.